So you can shorten that up, by the way. It's not specified here, so that's a default in Robert's Rules of Order. I can't see that ever happening, but do you have a question about that?
Yeah, not about that, but I've been told too that our public comment is longer than most.
And you allow five minutes?
Yeah.
And, you know, a lot of meetings or public meetings have it down to three. You also, though, as they share, you have the discretion to change that. So if you've got a crowded house and you're worried about being here until, you know, all hours of the night, you can change that on the fly. You can, as long as you apply it uniformly to everybody.
I'm not going to allow people to go over, right? As long as they're being...
You can. You have the discretion to do that, although, of course, the optics of that aren't going to look good. Now, if there's one person who represents a sort of a group, they speak on behalf of the group, you can put down a redundancy and let them take the time of the other members of the group. So that's one way to justify it.
That limits it to ten minutes, though, right?
Ours right now is ten, yes.
Okay. It was just a question.
Yep. So, again, you could each speak for 10 minutes twice per each vote, but I can't see that happening. Let's see what else is in here. You always do a roll call, which I really appreciate. That's not required by law. A lot of places don't do that except for where a statute specifies, like going in a closed session and that has to be done by a roll call vote. But it's nice that you do because then the city clerk has the notes to make really good minutes and everybody's real clear on who voted for what.
I find it allows, too, for reasoning, if you want to reason your vote.
Yep, yep. And it just, again, makes for very clear minutes because sometimes, you know, you need to look back and see who voted how. You have a duty to vote, and again, I haven't seen a lot of abstentions here, but some places where things get uncomfortable, city council members want to abstain from voting. And you have a duty to vote, an obligation to vote, even when it's uncomfortable. And the only reason that you can't vote is if you have a true conflict of interest. And that can be difficult to define sometimes, but, and again, I didn't write this, but it says, "The opinion of the city attorney shall be binding." So I guess I get to decide.
I think the only ones we've ever had are if, like, quotes come from Jim's company. Greg used to abstain from eating and doing quotes.
Yep.
Or, you know, appointments of family or whatever. I've seen abstentions, but never from a general vote, just to not vote.
Yep, and those are perfect examples where the, those are true conflicts. So situations where, you know, again, maybe it's your neighbor down the street and you feel uncomfortable, but you need to vote because that's not it or conflict. Again, not an issue, but just something to be refined about. Citizen comments. Again, you've got everybody limited to a maximum of five minutes during any public hearing of public comment. Technically, the sergeant of arms is supposed to notify you when the time has expired. Okay, but you guys have a good thing worked out.
He's got a hair horn under there.
I mean, some councils put a digital clock up in front, and that works really nicely. You just hit the button, and then the speaker knows how long they have, so that's kind of a nice way to do it as well. Again, at the discretion of the mayor, the time for speaking can be added or reduced. Prior to addressing the council, members of the public should state their name and address. And it says here, "Is appropriate group affiliation," but, you know, you're not going to force somebody to do that if they don't want to. Let's see here. Miscellaneous. Yep, these were rules that you already adopted. You can vote to suspend the rules in order to, if you need to, for some reason you anticipate not being able to comply by these, then you can move to suspend them if two-thirds of the members present vote to do so. Let's see. Bid awards have to be awarded during a public meeting. It can be a regular or a special meeting. You can establish special committees. I don't know if you do that every once in a while. I feel like you do that.
And we just don't allow standing committees here, so...
And then only certain individuals have the right to contact the city attorney regarding municipal matters. The mayor, council members, the manager, and city department has. And that's just to clarify that you don't want, you know, 50 different people colliding asking you questions that might conflict or might represent their own individual agenda as opposed to that of the city as a whole. So that's a, that's a good rule. So that's it. Those are your, those are your sort of general procedural rules. One, I guess, one procedural point that's not addressed in here, but that does come up at public meetings a lot, is when the conversation goes on for a really long time, maybe not 10 minutes twice for each of you, but it's going on and on, you're not getting anywhere, someone can make a motion to call the question. In other words, and that is not debatable, and that means it's time to vote. And that really makes the discussion sort of screech to a halt. So again, I have not seen that problem here, but if it were to arise, you have the right to do that, so. And what I've put in your packet, if you just want to read these to learn a lot more about Robert's Rules of Order, this is called the Introduction to Robert's Rules of Order, and it's boiled down to three pages instead of hundreds and hundreds. And again, it just, it lays out the four basic types of motions. The procedure, which again, you're already good at, calling to order, you need a second, you can debate, and then you move on them or vote on a motion. And then how motions are presented. So again, it's a very nice succinct breakdown of Robert's Rules of Order. So that follows in your packet. There was one type of voting lead out in here that talked about voting by ballot, and that's not allowed for public bodies, so that's why that's crossed out in there. It also addresses things like motions to table and motions to postpone indefinitely, which is a strategy that some people use, again, to just leave issues hanging, which is, you can suggest that, but that's, if you want to, you can do a motion to postpone indefinitely and leave an issue dangling. The most important parliamentary procedure list, of course, is to be courteous. That's the, right there in Robert's Rules of Order. And again, that seems to be the case here, so. And then behind that handout, I also put another brief guide to Robert's Rules of Order if you really want to get into it, so. Fun reading for all. And then I also gave you the latest copy of the Open Meetings Handbook, which again, there's just no issue here with regard to that. You all know how that works. This is not a political document. Whoever happens to be the attorney general at the time puts their name on it. It's the same handbook that's been in existence for many years. And again, it just explains the Open Meetings Act. It's a really, really good guide, and you already comply with it because, again, your staff, everybody knows how this works, and you do it. Now, things you have to be careful of are, and I know you're aware of this because you don't do it, email discussions can accidentally result in a violation of the Open Meetings Act. If you have a forum discussing things on email, that can constitute a meeting, and it can also constitute, therefore, a violation of the Open Meetings Act. And again, I don't see that, but it's very...
No, Mike and I, for a long time now, have been doing blind CC, so there is no reply out.
There's no reply out.
So everybody gets the information, but we can't discuss it.
Yep, I never send anything current copy. Everything's blind copy.
That's great, because again, you just can't get that discussion started.
Exactly.
Yep. And it's okay to send procedural things and to schedule things and provide information, but you cannot engage in...
An updating.
An update, absolutely. But you just can't engage in deliberation.
Correct.
So that's the most important thing. And again, closed sessions are a little more complicated, they're used less frequently, but those exceptions are also spelled out in here. And then Freedom of Information Act Handbook is also in here, because this is the other statute you have to be familiar with. Again, a lot of what you deal with are public records. I would say the vast majority of the documents that, that Mike and all of you work with are public documents. So if the public wanted to, they could submit a FOIA request. And Mike has a FOIA coordinator, I don't remember if that's you or...
No, it's Pletchev.
Okay. And you have a very short amount of time to respond to those. And there's a certain way to respond to it. And again, that's sort of a well-oiled machine here. You guys know how to respond to that in a timely manner, and so there are no issues with that. The only thing to be aware of there, again, is that things produced in writing that are public records, that are kept in the ordinary course of business, have to be disclosed. So it's the public's money, and so that's how it has to go. So you have to, you know, think twice before you put things in writing. There's, I always like to tell clients that there's no exception for an embarrassing document. It's not an exception. Embarrassing is not enough. There are a few exceptions, but embarrassment is not one of them. And so you just want to make sure that you're careful with your documents. The other thing I would point out is that it makes no difference where you store that public record. So it might be on your personal laptop or even on your private phone, but if it constitutes a public record, it doesn't matter where it's kept. So it's the content, it's not where it's kept, that matters for purposes of the analysis. So again, this is a really nice just summary of FOIA. And FOIA, Open Meetings Act, and your rules of procedure are the three things that you need to know to stay out of trouble, so.
We've done so far.
I have one question. When it's a group vote, is it an "aye" vote or a "yes" vote? Because I'm on different floors, and they say it's "yes" or "aye," so what, what is the correct way? I think it's sent you, believe it or not.
The correct one is "aye," A-Y-E, but I bet it's just so fun. Not, most people do not do that, but if you want to get all fancy...
I'm listening. There's a meeting over. They're ready.
Yes.
I just want to make sure so.
No, you're absolutely right. And if you look through here, you'll see it's "aye" and "no."
Yes.
But not "may," no?
Not "may."
No, I love it.
If you're going to be old English, be old English.
Well, Robert didn't write it that way. I don't know what's going on, so. If you have any questions about this, as things come up, just shoot me an email, so.
Also, usually the elected officials who have been doing the lead does a really good job with the open meeting stuff, with the whole breakout session and the half. Usually attorneys as speakers, and you find more of the questions you didn't know coming from other people who you do from the presentation. It's a pretty cool thing to change, but hit one of those breakouts. They're usually at convention every year. Any other questions for Jessica? Motion to adopt the city council rules of procedure as presented.
Aye. Oh, wait.
Not yet. I'll make that motion. I will support it. Any other discussion or questions for Jessica?
May.
Amy?
Okay. Councilmember Rose is absent. Mayor DeGord?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Tang?
Yes.
All right. Board of Commissioners reports, Cliff.
The historical folks haven't gotten together since I don't know when. Laura, Dave Austin, will be here on February 7th with a layout of the final phases for us to mull over. That's all I got.
Nelson, Jeff?
Arbor Board has been pushed out to March. The LCTV Fund at night is fast approaching, it's February 4th, so get your applications in for those who need some help. I attended the low light power meeting last week. We should be seeing their budget in the next couple of months. We've done it to us, so Charlie and his group will be working hard on that. They talked about time of use rate, which is something that we're all going to be able to look at. I think Charlie can maybe talk a little bit more about that. Maybe not tonight, but down the road on that part of it. The online portal for payment is ready, so sign up, get ready for that. It's, things like that. They are definitely dealing with COVID issues like everybody else in the country right now and here in Michigan, and that's all I got.
All right. Marty?
We discussed on my board.
Yeah, we did. We had Fire Authority presented a very preliminary, preliminary budget that should be coming to us here in the next month or so. New fire truck is still on schedule, August, hopefully August, at the latest September. So we'll all be invited down there to tour that. And we appointed board officers like everybody else, and nothing changed. Jessica's still the chair over there, and Tim Wittenbach is the vice chair. That is it. I think Vision was canceled today and covered the water and sewer. I don't know, any questions on the budgeted reports? Mike, any updates there?
Yeah, the, you know, if we're going through the budget, all the issues that I told you about really have been the issues that you already know. There really hasn't been any changes usually around first of January. That's when I start looking at all the individual line items to make sure there isn't really any discrepancies that we need to really look at. Really hasn't come, got to that level yet. There's a couple of things that administratively we just have to figure out, but nothing major. The one thing that I did notice, and I think it's a good thing, we're, our staff is doing a very good job of putting in their rental, they're filling in their rental forms. We pay rentals to the equipment fund, and that is how we buy equipment. So what I tell staff basically is, is if you don't fill those, if you don't do those reports properly, I can't buy, I can't buy equipment when the time comes. And as we've had transition to newer staff, they're really getting the message that they should be putting their, putting their, filling out their rental forms. So even some of the expenditures in rentals already that we've had to this point, it's because, quite frankly, they, some employees who retired just didn't really track rentals really well, and we're doing, we're doing a much better job of that, so. But all in all, the issues that I've told you about, you know, in the previous budget reports are, aren't been the same. We haven't had anything really fly off since those issues, so that's all I have on the budget.
Okay. Any questions on any of the monthly reports from the packet? Mike, City Manager's report?
Yep, a couple things. We've had our share of COVID issues across the city over the last, pretty much since the first of the year. DPW has seen a few of those, and the good, I mean, the good news is it hasn't really impacted staffing levels and pre-ownable ride service. We had a, over the weekend, we had a number of water and rain breaks. We had a significant break both on Bowles Road and on Division near High. And our staff, a lot of them, as a matter of fact, it was, one of our employees was his first weekend in, called, granted, he came from a previous city doing water and sewer work, but they did an excellent job. The staff that was available came out, helped up. They did a really good job trying to mitigate the problems and get the, the issues under control. So that's, I do thank them for that. They do, they always do a good job. It's, it's, it's nice to know that we don't have to, you know, our DPW and our staff, they don't, you know, I can tell you, working on other sides of the state, and, you know, more employees find ways to get out of work than actually do the work, and we did, that is not an issue in the city at all, so I think that's something to be proud of. I know I've talked to you briefly about the health insurance pools and captives. I had a conversation, I met with one entity last week about their captive slash pool. What it basically does is it puts our, you know, it puts our healthcare package into a larger pool of people. Is it going to save us money on our quotes, on our services? Maybe, maybe not, but the biggest issue that I, that I, that I fear every year is the, the massive rate, rate increase. And by putting it in the pool, this really does prevent that. Charlie and I met with BHS, our current provider, our current broker, with a company who's, they, they were one of the first companies that do captives nationwide. Not, they don't have a lot of municipalities in Michigan in their captives, so it's a concern of mine when, when you don't have that. But we are meeting with the West Michigan Health Insurance Pool later this week to learn about what they offer. We are going to, we are just getting estimates as to what, the, what it would look like once I have that information. It seems like it's something that I would recommend to us to move forward with. I would bring it to you, but I also have to approach the unions. And, but we are, we are, we are looking at that as an option. I'm also looking at moving the retirees. MERS actually has a pool for retirees. Rather than keeping them on our current plan, we can move them to that, possibly move them to that pool. So I'm, I'm working with MERS on that as well. Trail update, as, as Councilman Yankovic mentioned, at next council meeting, we should have a trail update for you. We're looking at probably the second meeting in February. We're going, the, the study we did a few years back about the future of the, of the fairgrounds, we're going to bring that to you to start thinking about. And so we'll bring that later in February. I'll have any more at that meeting. I am meeting with MERS tomorrow. The, as you know, I had the, I had them do a study to extend the five, five years amortization period on the, on the unfunded pension liability. I'm not necessarily looking to reduce our payments now. I'm looking at basically trying to cushion us if, for example, the rate of return goes south or there are investments go south. That's what I'm trying to protect us from is those possible surges. So I'll be meeting with MERS tomorrow to go over that, and then, once I have an idea how we need to proceed with, with MERS, I'll probably be coming back to the council with more information. Marijuana facilities, we did learn that we will be accounted for five marijuana facilities. The state has received $270 million in excise tax the last fiscal year for adult-use facilities. If you take that, municipal, the local governments that have opted in, they get 15% of that. So that 15% is roughly $40,500,000, somewhere around that, that nature. If you divide, there's 374 facilities statewide. If you divide that 374 and you do the math, it looks like it's over $108,000 per facility statewide. However, as part of the statute, when that was approved, the, there's costs that the state gets for their, for their, for their, for them running marijuana regulatory agency along with the medical study for the PTSD veterans. I don't know what that's going to take off the top. My, the people I've talked to, is we're looking at about $40,000 to $50,000 per facility when it's all said and done. That's significant, I mean, that's significantly higher than what we had budgeted. We'd only budgeted $100,000 this year in excise tax, which would immediately go to the local street fund. So once I have more information on that, I will let you know.
Is that in addition to the per facility? Didn't we get, we just got $28,000 for having one place of...
Last year. Last year.
That was the tax money.
That was the excise tax.
Okay.
So, so, yeah. So then, the last thing is, we're finally getting the back door fixed. It'll be the week of January 30th. We will probably divert all people to the main street entrance because they're going to need to shut that door down that week while they're going to work. So that's all I have.
Oh, this, oh, here?
Yeah, with all the wood and all that, they gotta, yeah, the main, the entrance off from the rock.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Any questions for me?
Yeah, so we're going to be repairing that. Is that same contractor going to start taking care of our windowsills and some of the...
Dan can answer that.
They looked at that, they have yet to give me a quote on that. They were trying to fine-tune that till we get an actual accurate number. So they started with the door. Yeah, because I know there's some awesome material that can replace what we got, and we'll never have to deal with it again.
And I have noticed some of the deterioration has been coming up down the street on that wood as well, too, other than just the front door area, so if I see it, other people see it.
All right. Thank you. Appointments, I gave everybody a renewal fee. Historically, when we do appointments, we talk about vacancies, and we ask these people to apply, apply, apply. Then they apply for a board, and it turns out that the vacancy is somebody already serving just with an expired term. But I think it's unfair to continually ask people to volunteer their time and then tell them, "Hey, just kidding, not that board," right? So I went through with Susie, and we found everybody who expires in 2022 at all from any board. Contested them and the board chairs, see if these people wish to continue on these boards or if they would be, like, resigning when their terms were up. I had two resignations on the DDA. Mike Springer, who was technically expired first of the year, and Julie was set to expire next year. And then one on the Local Officer Compensation Committee, which expired June of 2021. So she doesn't wish to restart that. Everybody else, looks like three planning, Casey on Hartson Rep, Cliff on Lara, who's probably far away, Long is Fongo, three on Local Officers Compensation, two on Lighten Power, Mark Munt from LCTV, Sue Olend on the Building Authority. I've not gotten ahold of Doc Regan yet about Harbor Board. Susie had given me a couple of numbers. I hadn't heard back, so she had sent him an email, but she was off yesterday and today, so. And then Dave Pasquale on the Airport Board. So I'd like to do is renew everybody on this list who wants to, create vacancies officially for the ones who don't. That'll get outside of resignations, that'll clean up the rest of 2022 for appointments and give people a more fair idea of what boards are available. Any questions or concerns on any of the renewals? Okay. And let's go to alternates. Sorry, not alternates, vacancies. The Board of Review has a vacancy for an alternate. It's a three-member board. They stood, keep an alternate so they can always guarantee three at their meetings in case one member of three can't show up. There's an application in your packets. Look like handsome local resident named Mike DeBoer, who's willing to serve on that board. There's no objections to that. Marty, with his construction experience, has offered to sit as a citizen on the Construction Board of Appeals. If there's no objections to that. And then we have two applications in our packets, both downtown business owners, for the two DDA vacancies. Nicole from Betty's Pages and Lori from Red Barn. They would like to join the DDA, which would leave us zero renewals and zero vacancies for the foreseeable future, if everybody's in agreement to that.
To that?
To that. We'll forward that on to Susie when she gets back. Now let's go to...
Thanks for stepping up.
Let's go to...
There's Lori.
Yeah, Lori's back there. Hi, Lori. Council boards, we had talked a couple meetings ago about, I think Jim brought it up, just taking a look at what boards everybody's on as far as the ones that are required by a council member and taking a look at if any of those needed to be shuffled around. I can't leave DDA, right? State statute says the mayor has to be on DDA. I would prefer not to leave Fire Authority, and it's a mayor spot on Division Alliance, too, with the township. So my boards are pretty locked in. Marty, you're comfortable continuing planning?
Yes, sir.
And the Airport Board?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing, Marty was zoning board chairman. That's just the council with a different name. That zoning board comes in, it's all members of the council. So I'd like to appoint somebody else as chair of that. Either one of you would be interested in being the chair of that board.
And when, when did they meet and all of that stuff?
We've only done it, like, twice.
Yeah, zoning board meets as needed.
As needed. We get it once.
When did we meet on? You being Sue this year?
That was building authority.
Okay, okay, yeah. It was something.
We did it on Zoom, and Mike start running the meeting, remember?
Yeah. So it's just a non-mayor, non-mayor purpose.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it.
You want to do it? All right. Jim will do that. Leah is on the Chamber Board, Hartson Rep and Harbor Board. I dropped her today.
I'm a little baffled because I thought I was the Harbor Board rep because I got all the mails and stuff, and I'm on that. So if, if Leah wants it, I don't have to attend them, I'm okay with it.
On Susie's list, you were, too. That's where I got confused.
Yes.
So I don't know if Leah took one of our citizen spots, because that was short people, too. But as far as council goes, we had all the mail changes.
But if Leah wants to, to be the rep from that, I'm okay with that?
Let me check if... Let me check officially.
Yeah.
Because I'm pretty sure you're the council rep, and she's, she had applied extra as a citizen. But I'll verify that, and I'll get back to the on Arbor Board. Cliff, HDC.
Yeah.
Lara.
Yeah.
And the Look Committee.
Yeah.
Okay. Jim, LCTV.
Yeah.
And for now, Light and Power, right?
Yeah, I, I changed some things in my style of my, my life over the summer, and I'll be off a lot of Thursdays. And I understand that you guys might be moving your meetings to a different night. I did respond to your email today, Charlie, that I would be in favor of changing that night, and if we did, then I could stay on, on the board, so if that all happens.
So we'll do, everybody stays on the boards, they're on, I'll check on Arbor Board for you, and I'll let you know when Susie gets back, and then we'll hold off anything on Light and Power until their board brings us a recommendation. Does that sound pretty great to everybody? Okay. Council comments, Marty?
I attended the poker run Thursday night. The Chamber of Commerce sold 69 wristbands. It was well-attended. It was actually quite a nice night. The end game was, was to try to raise money for the VFW and.
American Legion.
Yeah, American Legion. And we ended up raising $565.
Somewhere around there.
So it was a very successful night. That's a lot of five-dollar bills that got collected that night, and I would like to thank the Fire Department for manning the, the fires that we have. It was a cold night, and them girls were freezing, but they stuck it out. And it was a good, good, good idea to have them go.
Yep.
It was.
It was Saturday.
Yeah. It was colder on Saturday, too, they were out there. Uh, plus.
I would just like to say how happy I was to hear Roberta Jane, Fay, Valley Vista, Heffron, Monroe Street, and G Drive are all getting dealt with this year, streets and roads, and I have a couple people I know on Washington Street that are having the minutes for that total reconstruction. We are working on it.
Jim?
Yeah, with that construction, many dusty, dirty days of your house, so don't be hanging out here for your laundry. I want to thank the DPW here and the weather that we had for the great job of keeping our streets safe and sidewalks in downtown, so that, that was real good. I did get to meet Chief over at the Fire Barn. I was going to, Mike could add to why, why they got the, the dog over there coming on up on his spot, but it was nice to meet him and understand why we got that part of it, so that's it for me.
Yeah, we'll talk about Chief for a minute. Originally purchased as a Christmas present, he was adopted by the Fire Department members, so he's down there eight to four with Shannon during his full-time human chief hours. He's going through some puppy classes right now. When he graduates from puppy classes, the next look is to get him into the support dog program, which would be cool, and the, the feedback on him so far has been fantastic. I mean, people stepping into the fire station now, twofold, right? Me and the guys, seeing that they're there during the day now for him, and you get to pet the dog. Marty and I showed up yesterday, but the dog called in sick, so we didn't get a handle on it. It's just another example of all the stuff that those guys are doing down there every single day that doesn't get noticed unless you call them for an emergency, which hopefully, ideally, you never have to do. It's a great department, full of great people, full of great ideas, and the execution so far has been pretty flawless from those guys. I'd like to compliment also Dan and his guys. Every winter, it seems like those first couple of snows bring out the appreciation for the DPW. We have council, there are public comment here talking about how bright you are, even though she's going through an uncomfortable situation, so credit to everybody down in your department. Jim?
Double up your cold patch for the spring because the roads aren't looking too good, but I see for that right now, just FYI. With that, we'll make the motion to adjourn at 8:25.
What's for? Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, or adjourned.